All right, 6:00 PM by my read.
It is 6:00 PM. Yes, thank you, Leila. So we will go ahead and call the meeting to order. This is a council regular session on February 8th. Looks like all members are present. There is audience participation and it looks like we have a couple of hands up. Comments must be limited to city business topics that are not on the agenda. A topic may not be discussed if the topic record has been closed. We will limit those comments to three minutes and I'm not sure how this works, Leila. Does Judy take care of or someone else take care of the hands?
Yeah, Nancy will unmute folks as she sees them raise their hands. So she's tracking them. So Nancy?
Okay, Donna Miller is up first. Go right ahead, Donna.
Hi, Donna.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Understandably, everyone wants a healthy, safe and comfortable environment to work in. But at what cost do we spend to provide this? And what other essential projects are being ignored because we don't have the funds? Our city water systems, particularly the reservoirs, are in need of repair and reinforcement. According to the Berger-Abum study completed at the city's request, January 2018, our water system is at risk for seismic impact, landslides, liquidation and reservoir collapse and failure. Our water system is an essential survival element in any disaster, whether it be earthquake, landslide or fires. This system affects all residents, over 600 full-time residents, hundreds of second homers and tourists. Why are we considering building a $5 to $8 million city hall for 15 to 18 employees rather than updating our essential water system for everybody?
Are we waiting to get started?
Oh. Are you guys not hearing me?
No, we hear you. What was your question, Jenny? She has a minute and 35 left.
I can't hear you.
I don't hear you now, Donna. Okay.
Gone through the screen.
I think she's gone. So we will go next to...
Okay, the next one would be Sandy Wood. Go ahead, Sandy.
If unmuted, can you hear me?
We can hear you, Sandy. Thank you.
Thank you all for all your time and dedication. I agree with Donna Miller about the water system problems. We also have roads that need to be improved. And a question was raised about a portable building for the city employees to work in while all this gets settled so that they will be in a safe and clean environment, et cetera. I also have a question regarding speed limits, especially with the tourists. Speed limits on all the major streets. I live on the corner of South Carmel and we have just been very lucky not to have had any accidents. There need to be speed limits and signs and crosswalks painted across South Carmel at least just to give people the idea that they are permitted to cross. My other concern is cars on beach. There is no reason for any of us to have to deal with traffic on the beach. It may be a highway according to Oregon law, but the city can forbid access on Treasure Cove and take care of the problem. So that's my thing for the moment. Thank you very much and have a great meeting.
Thank you, Sandy, for participating. Appreciate your call.
All right, Kelly Roy is up next.
Hi, everyone. This is Kelly Roy. I'm a citizen of Manzanita and kind of the general voice of positivity and just appreciation for all the hard work that our council members and staff have done over the past few years to bring the City Hall project and other critical projects to a point where we can actually make some positive movement on making those happen. I want to also remind folks that we have a very experienced city manager who understands how to make multiple city improvements happen simultaneously. I don't think we have to choose between all these things. There's lots of different pots of funding out there for things. And it's going to take some creativity and resourcefulness. And we're very fortunate to have probably one of the brightest planners in the state on our staff. So that's exciting to me. Also, in the spirit of having participated in the Envision Manzanita and most recently the Destination Management meetings, it seems like there's a lot of citizens that are looking for ways to get engaged in a positive way, ways that we can help our city work on things that are outside of the subcommittees and things that are the official business of the city. And if folks are interested in getting together to make those positive things happen, there's a lot of ideas that have come up in those meetings and I think there are things that we can do together to work together, get to know each other and also make positive changes in our community while our council members and mayor and city manager are doing the hard work of making all of these really big and exciting projects happen. So anyway, just thank you for all of your time and your service and all of your hard work over the past few years. And I look forward to keeping the momentum going in a positive direction.
Thank you, Kelly. And I think there is a Destination Management meeting tomorrow at the Pine Grove from 2:00 to 5:00 o'clock. So yeah, it'd be great to see you there again. Looks like Donna had another minute and 30 seconds left.
Yeah, she's back.
Yeah, Donna's back. So go ahead, Donna.
Okay, thank you. I don't know what happened. I got cut off there. So...
Yeah, the minute 30, Donna.
Okay, why are we considering building a $5 to $8 million city hall for 15 to 18 employees rather than updating our essential water system? I do want a healthy, safe building for our city employees, but not at Underhill Plaza, which has been identified by Bergman as a potential landslide location. And I do not want an oversized, expensive, state-of-the-art construction and furnishings. I am asking that the current project be put on hold, fix the water system, fix our streets and necessary infrastructure. Take care of the citizens first. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. Are there any other hands out there?
No, that is not mayor.
Okay, thank you. Next, we move to the consent agenda. Those are items that appeared in our packet. I had a couple of corrections on the January 11th minutes in Section 6. It says that the regular sessions will be on the first Wednesday of the month at 6:00 PM and the work sessions will be the second Wednesday. On the Rules of Procedures on Page 10, it says that it's the Wednesday after the first Monday of each month?
That's correct. Thanks for catching that. We can update that to reflect first Wednesday after the first Monday and then the Wednesday following the regular session will be the work session.
Perfect. Thank you.
Sorry to catch that. Thank you.
And then on January 18th, on the fifth paragraph, let's see, it talks about hard and soft costs were presented by the Klosch Group. Jesse Stenger with the Klosch Group explained the City Hall project budget components. I don't remember soft costs being included in that discussion.
That is correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Does anyone else have corrections or comments? Okay, then we will put to the vote to approve the consent agenda.
So moved. With those amendments.
With those amendments. Thank you. A second. Okay. And Jerry and Brad?
So all in favor?
All in favor. Thank you. Thank you, Linda. I'll get it down one of these days.
Your second, so that's...
Yeah, that is my second one. Here we are. I appreciate the help and the mentoring and I know Linda spent a little time with me and asked that a change of procedure would be that helpful if I didn't go around to everybody and call on you and rather trust that when you have something to say, you will speak up. So we will make that change going forward. Next on the agenda, do we have to do a separate approval of the bills, Leila?
Uh, no, it's on the...
It's on the consent. Okay. So we go to...
Pardon? That was completed, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
And it was passed.
Thank you.
With those corrections. Old business. We have the Transportation Systems Plan update. And I think Brianna Calhoun and Cara Hall are both here.
Yeah, so actually Cara is here and hopefully she'll turn her camera on so we can see her.
Yes, can you all...
Oh, there she is.
There you are. Okay.
Thanks. And I think she's also joined by a couple of folks from ODOT.
Yes, we've got James Feldman here from ODOT as well and then Caroline Chris also joining on behalf of ODOT this evening.
Awesome. Thanks, everyone. Thanks for having us. Yeah, thanks for joining us tonight. Well, I'll just quickly introduce the team and then pretty much hand it over to Cara to do a presentation. But Cara's been working for Fairad Peers and they're the consultant group working with ODOT to do a regional transportation systems plan that includes the city of Manzanita, Wheeler and Nahalem. And so this was underway prior to my tenure here, but over the last 18 months have been working with this group to get us to a final document which we're like at. So Cara is here to sort of give the lay of the land, sort of the history of the project, kind of up into where we are today and then sort of forecast out for us what the next steps are. You know, ultimately, the goal would be to adopt the Transportation System Plan as an ancillary document to our comprehensive plan. So this would be in effect updating our comprehensive plan tractor on transportation so that we could have a foundation for which we can then build changes into our ordinances. And so we've actually covered a lot of that work here and Cara will go over that in more detail. But it's not only a plan. This grant also helped us build that implementing language. So with that, I will hand it over to Cara and I think Nancy, if you haven't already, she'll need the ability to share her screen, I suspect.
Yes. Yeah, it looks like still disabled. So I can get that. Okay, here we go.
She should have it now.
Perfect. Thank you. Okay. So like Leila mentioned, we really are approaching the end of this Transportation System Plan process. So we wanted to come to you all and provide an overview of what that's entailed, some of the key pieces of the TSP for the region and Manzanita, and then share a little bit just about next steps. So I'm going to start with just an overview of what the TSP is and talk about some of the goals, objectives and policies that are being developed as part of this TSP process. Talk about specific modal networks, so how we are thinking about providing roadways for vehicles, also people walking and biking, and talk about the specific projects that have come out of this process and then like Leila was mentioning, how we can start to work towards the implementation side of things. So starting with a TSP overview, a Transportation System Plan is really a document that describes the transportation system as it is today and the transportation needs in the future. It also outlines projects, programs and policies to meet the transportation needs. And those are really based on both the technical analysis that inform that but also the community aspirations for what kind of transportation system Manzanita and the region as a whole want to have moving forward. As Leila mentioned, this document typically serves as a transportation component of the local comprehensive plan. So why develop a TSP? First, Manzanita's current TSP was developed in 2003. It was also focused on the downtown area. And while it did make some recommendations for streets coming out of downtown, this was really an opportunity to take a more holistic look at Manzanita's transportation system and also how that fits within the region. Like I mentioned earlier, this is an opportunity to evaluate needs and it creates a way to share goals and investments supported by your community and opens opportunities for collaboration with other agencies, whether that be Nahalem and Wheeler there in the region or thinking about the Oregon Department of Transportation as they own and operate US 101 and then even Tillamook County as you all share some key roadways with the county as well. So what does a TSP do? So there's really five components here. The first is it defines what the community wants. So I'll talk a little bit about how we've engaged the community in this process as we go through this presentation. But it's really an opportunity to document the goals and visions for the transportation system. It also documents existing transportation infrastructure and identifies improvements that will be needed in the future. We have identified potential funding sources that the city could utilize to secure more funding for transportation projects. And then also identifies high priority projects. So projects that are really key to achieving the goals or were supported by a large number of community members. So what does a TSP not do? One thing it does not do is project refinement and design. So there's about 80 projects in total that have been identified as part of this. But those projects have not been refined or designed in any detail. It also does not identify specific timing for when these projects will be built or allocate specific funding for building projects. So the TSP process, as you can see here, everything shown in green is what's complete and that blue dot there at the end, council adoption, that's the piece that we're kind of approaching as we wrap up this draft plan. So this process really started with a detailed look at existing and future conditions. So evaluating how the transportation system functions today, where are there locations where it's not meeting existing needs as we think about how growth will continue to occur in the region and travel will change, where might there be areas where it won't meet needs in the future. That was followed by development of a series of goals and then following that performance metric. So how are we evaluating how well specific projects align with those goals? The outcome of that was a list of policies, programs and projects needed to actually move the system towards meeting those goals. And then the last two components there, one being funding. So we'll look at if current trends continue, how much money does the city have to allocate towards transportation in the future and what are other sources that the city could look to to increase that funding? And then the last piece being development of a draft plan. So what is actually in the TSP? As we mentioned, this is a regional effort. So it's developing a TSP for Manzanita, Nahalem, Wheeler and the areas in between. So Volume 1 of the TSP is really the overview of the TSP process and those regional projects. This component of the TSP will also document the public involvement and the stakeholder input as well as those regional goals and objectives and the regional recommendations and projects. Volume 2 of the TSP is where the Manzanita specific pieces will live. So there are a set of goals and policies unique to Manzanita as well as proposed networks for bike vehicles, biking and walking, and then also a discrete set of projects within Manzanita's jurisdiction. So Leila mentioned this a little bit in her intro, but just a little bit of background on how the TSP will be used. So the TSP goals and objectives will be incorporated as transportation policies in the comprehensive plan. And the ultimate goal is to adopt the TSP by reference. And for Manzanita, that would be Volume 1, so the regional component, and Volume 2, the Manzanita specific component, and then Volume 5, which is where all of the technical documentation will live. There is also an opportunity to update the development code as part of this. So this process has also included a review of the development code to identify where it maybe does not align with the goals and policies being developed as part of the TSP. Also an opportunity to implement street design and access standards and include the addition of traffic impact analysis guidelines for development that may be occurring in the city. So as we walk through this tonight, I'm going to start with Volume 1. So a little bit more on some of the background that's kind of led us to this point in the TSP process and also talk about those regional projects. And then following that, we will get into some of the Manzanita specific components. So one component of Volume 1 is the regulatory context and background. On the regulatory side, development of a TSP is really guided by a couple of key components here. So one being Oregon Revised Statutes 197.712 and the transportation planning rule, which you'll often hear referred to as TPR. Some kind of primary pieces of those are that they require that TSPs consider current comprehensive plan land use and resulting growth. The real goal of the Transportation System Plan is to make sure that you're developing a transportation system that aligns with your expected land use, really recognizing the interaction between transportation and land use. And there's also a requirement to consider alternative modes of travel. So making sure that we're developing a system that meets the needs of all users and not just focusing maybe on people driving. And then just one note here, because Manzanita's population is less than 10,000, there are some exemptions from requirements on the regulatory side of things. Another starting point, as we were kind of diving into this process, was some of the planning documents that have already been developed in the region. As I mentioned, the ultimate goal here is to adopt this as part of the comprehensive plan. And there's also just a number of other planning documents within the region that we want to make sure the goals and policies are not in conflict with or are helping to advance and move the region towards. So you can see kind of the list of things there that were considered at the county level. Tillamook County does have a transportation system plan. We know that there's been some effort over the last couple of years to develop the Trail Master Plan for the city and then also referencing that original transportation plan and the city's comprehensive plan. And then similar consideration for documents developed by the other three communities in the region. So another important component of this process was public involvement. So throughout the process, we relied on a number of tools to solicit input from folks in the community, one of those being a planning advisory committee. So this was a group that included local representatives from each of the three committees and met throughout the process. This group really served as kind of a sounding board and vetting group for some of the key project milestones. So the goals and objectives, development of the draft project list were all points that that group was engaged in. Also assistance in review by agency representatives, so from each of the three cities, ODOT and Tillamook County as well. And then we've also deployed a number of online tools. This project did start at the height of the pandemic, which limited our ability to do in-person outreach early on. So we were relying on a project website, virtual events and online surveys, some targeted advertisements to get the word out. And then we're also able to host finally an in-person event in 2022. So that was a great opportunity to actually get out and engage with folks in person. And then have also been to a number of planning mission and city council briefings along the way just to share updates at key milestones and make sure that people are aware of the progress. And then the last component there being public hearings as part of the adoption process. So that being the next step for this. So just to share a little bit more about how we actually engaged the community throughout this. So we had three really focused touchpoints with the community. The first one being the goals and objectives. So early on in the process, this was hosted virtually and it was an opportunity for community members to not only review the work that had been done to document the existing conditions in the region, but also to share their perspectives and barriers to travel. So an opportunity to make sure that we heard from folks in the communities about their experience using the transportation system today. And also asking people to provide input on the goals and objectives that have been developed embedded by that planning advisory committee. The second event was the draft project list. So at this point, we had a list of just over 100 projects that we actually took to the community. And that was both an online open house where people can log on to the website and view all the projects, but also included community conversations. So hosted meetings with all three communities to talk about specific projects or hear concerns. And then the last one was that in-person opportunity that I just mentioned. And that was really an opportunity for folks to review the final project list and help us identify high priority projects. And that all informed the list of projects that we'll be talking about as part of tonight's presentation. So getting into the regional goals. So the way the goals for this TSP are structured is there are four goals that apply to regional projects and all of the projects within all three cities. And then recognizing the unique context and transportation challenges for each of the three communities, we also developed two goals that are unique and specific to each of the communities. So I'll talk about the regional goals as part of this one and then share a little bit more on the Manzanita specific ones when we get into Volume 2 here shortly. So the first goal on the regional side was quality of life. So this goal's really focused on creating a transportation system that provides equitable multimodal access with consideration for underserved and vulnerable populations. And then another really important component of this one being that we balance the needs of local travelers and regional through traffic. Early on in this process, we heard a lot about the challenges of traveling for folks that live there and balancing that with the needs of people kind of either traveling to the region to visit or through the region on US 101. So objectives under this one are focused on providing equitable access for underserved and vulnerable populations by requiring ADA compliance for new transportation infrastructure and upgrading existing infrastructure, looking for opportunities to create increased connection to the recreational opportunities, including supporting some of the planned regional and bicycle and pedestrian trails, creating comfortable downtown spaces. Creating comfortable downtown spaces within the three communities um through things like streetscape improvements, landscaping. Um, and then the last one being reducing vehicle travel between the cities um by exploring options for visitors to park once. Uh, the second regional goal was creating safe connections. Um, so this goal's really focused on um enhancing options for people to walk and bike off of US 101. Um, and recognizing that there will be um travelers who need to use of US 101 in the region. So um a focus on making that safer. Um, so key objectives under this one are identifying the non-motorized routes between the communities. Um, and prioritizing these for um people walking and biking. Uh, connecting businesses and recreational uh destinations with neighborhoods by enhancing crossings on US 101. Um, improving areas with high risk uh crash risk. Um, also addressing known safety issues um or locations along uh. And either 101 or existing uh roadways. And then um collaborating with ODOT to implement um engineering and traffic calming strategies on US 101. Uh, to reduce vehicle speeds. Um, goal three for uh the region overall collaborating with ODOT and Tillamook County to plan for the future. Um, and this goal is really focused on building a more resilient transportation system. Uh, that can either withstand uh extreme weather events. Um, and is able to safely accommodate evacuation and recovery efforts um in the event of a natural disaster. So um under this goal, objectives really focused on maintaining local infrastructure. Um, especially those that are um key to evacuation efforts. Improving traffic circulation and access for fire and emergency vehicles. Um, and then collaborating with ODOT um on uh engineering strategies and design for US 101. Um, consistent with other planning efforts. Uh, the last goal on the regional side is supporting fiscal responsibility. Uh, so we know that um funding and maintaining the existing transportation uh system is is a challenge with current funding sources. So we want to be sure that as we're thinking about what the future of the transportation system looks like. We're thinking about um a financially viable uh system, including uh the consideration for lifecycle costs. Um, and opportunities to uh identify new funding sources to make local dollars go further. So in addition to solutions that are cost effective. Um, other objectives under this one also being um identifying outside funding sources such as grants. Or opportunities for developer contributions or uh transportation system charges. Also prioritizing investment and maximizing partnerships. Um, so thinking about opportunities to collaborate with other agencies. Um, on some of these project implementation side of things. And then um just making sure that we're considering future operation and maintenance costs. Um, as we identify investments for the future. So each of these goals had um a set of evaluation criteria. Um, and the the primary objective behind developing the evaluation criteria was to make sure that the projects that we were recommending. Actually align with and help us advance those goals that were set early in the process. Um, so for that first goal, um maintaining quality of life. Uh, projects that advance that goal are really focused on improving access for underserved or vulnerable population. Um, improving a route predominantly used by local travelers. Um, and then on the flip side of that, as we think about how we're accommodating that need for um regional movement. To also projects that improve the experience of people traveling through Nahalum Bay. On the safety side, uh projects that advance this goal. Address a location with a history of fatal or severe injury crashes and um or bicycle and pedestrian crashes. Also projects that create new connections off of US 101. Um, and projects that include traffic calming elements aimed at slowing vehicles down. Um, another one um under this one would be projects that address a location with a latent risk of crashes. Um, so maybe there haven't been any crashes there because maybe the volume and the number of people who use it today is low. Um, but as that we expect, as that increases, um, there could be an issue there. So we want to make sure that we're um thinking ahead and not just being reactive on the safety side of things. Um, as we get into planning for the future. Um, projects that advance this goal maintain or rebuild critical infrastructure. Um, include an opportunity to um reduce maintenance on local roads. And then also improving US 101 um consistent with ODOT standards. Uh, the last one, so the fiscal responsibility. Projects that advance this goal build on investments in transportation funded primarily by other entities. Um, and projects that decrease future operations or maintenance costs. On the um regional transportation needs side of things. Um, so as we got into evaluating what um how the transportation system was operating today. We looked at both capacity on US 101. Um, and several of the key intersections in the region to determine if additional capacity was needed. Um, so this was completed using traffic volume um from 2020, but it was adjusted um both for the impacts of COVID on travel. Um, and to account for seasonal conditions, because we know that that is um a challenge for transportation in the region. Um, as we looked out into the future, um to complete some of that same analysis. Uh, we were relying on both forecast growth um on US 101, which is uh completed by ODOT. And then um also just population growth in the area. So some key findings, both as we think about how the system's operating today and in the future. So um for the today side, uh we did find that capacity is sufficient to meet demand. However, we do know that visitor traffic impacts the experience of local users. Um, a really great example of this um is the um US 101 and Seventh Street intersection in Nahalum. So while the capacity at that intersection may be adequate. Uh, we know that there's some confusion, um especially for visitors who are new to the region. Uh, they may be slowed down or stop when they're not supposed to and do cause delay. Um, so in the future, additional capacity was also not needed uh based on the analysis. Uh, but again, recognizing that some of these challenges that result from um just the large number of visitors to the region. Um, are only going to continue to increase if we don't um change how people travel. Um, and identify improvements that help traffic flow more smoothly. Um, another component of the regional evaluation was also safety. Um, so we looked at um four years of crash data um in the region. Um, and as you can see on the map there, um each of those little dots is where a uh crash occurred. Most crashes in the region occur on US 101. Um, and as we dug into um some of the factors contributing to those crashes. Uh, high vehicle speed was identified as a factor in many of the crashes. Um, so some improvements that were identified based on these um safety findings include enhanced curb delineation. Um, so you can see by the map there, just a few um of the areas with with curves in the region. Or where um a large portion of the crashes occurred. Traffic calming to lower vehicle speeds. Um, so we know that especially as vehicles enter each of the three communities on US 101. Speeding can be a real um safety concern. Also high visibility crosswalks to improve uh visibility where there are marked crossings on US 101. And then another um safety component is just sidewalk improvement to address existing deficiencies. And ensure that facilities are consistent with ADA standards. So getting into the regional transportation need for bikes. Um, so really existing infrastructure at the regional level is shared with uh vehicles. Um, so there's no dedicated space for people biking um outside of some locations where there are wide shoulders on US 101. Um, and those are certainly not accessible and comfortable for people of all ages and all abilities. Um, the the need for dedicated space space for people bicycling is something that we heard. Um, throughout the community engagement process. Um, also a need for facilities that connect the communities off of US 101. Um, and then a little bit more specific to Manzanita, but certainly a desire uh from the region as a whole. Is just a need for facilities that connect people to the state park, um especially people who may want to bike and walk.
Hey Kara, I just wanted to do a quick um time check, uh just to circle in on that. And wondered if there's um, you sent us a version of this PowerPoint which we'll post to the website. Um, but thought maybe we could kick through to the Manzanita specific stuff.
Sure.
Um, yeah, sorry, just wanted to make sure we were able to get through and on to that.
Yeah.
Piece of it, but this is all.
Um, so just a couple kind of pieces to highlight on the regional side. Uh, like Leila said, uh you will get the packet that has all this information in it. Um, so the regional projects are focused on those that fall um outside of any of the specific um communities. Um, I think a couple for um Manzanita is just recognizing that Ocean Road is actually owned and operated by the county. Um, so those are projects that are identified on the regional list, though we know that they will um impact you all directly. Um, there are um really five specific types of projects that we've identified. Um, so the first thing signage and wayfinding um or others. So that is where we've kind of slotted in some of those um unique projects. Also bicycle and pedestrian enhancements, um roadway projects. So those are looking at like repaving or uh connecting roadways that maybe don't uh connect today. And then um the safety uh projects. So some of those that I was mentioning earlier around improving locations where there are um specific crashes or a history of crashes. And then the new bicycle and pedestrian connections. Um, I mentioned earlier, um that there's no specific timeline for implementation um identified for these projects. But we have kind of grouped them into near term, medium term or long term. And this is really just based on the um complexity of the projects, uh both from a cost perspective. And how many um different agencies might need to be involved in implementation of that. Um, so you can see here, this is the list of all or the map of all the regional projects. Um, this will be included in that that presentation you'll you all will receive as well as a list of of different projects. Um, with that, I'll kind of move to the Manzanita specific ones. Um, and updates for you here. So um just to kind of quickly highlight uh the two specific Manzanita goals. So the first one being to manage access. Um, so this is thinking about managing access from Highway 101 to Manzanita. Um, specifically with consideration for the recreational opportunities. And looking to minimize cut through traffic and seasonal congestion on some of the local streets. And then um the the second Manzanita specific goal being to support economic vibrancy. And reduce parking demands by providing walking, biking and transit connections to the commercial core and the beach. Um, I will kind of quickly take us uh through some of the uh recommendations on um the network side of things. Um, so one way that we'll talk about the the roadway system is by functional classification. Um, so you can see here uh really three different types of classification within Manzanita. So principal arterials, that's US 101. Um, again, recognizing that that's um operated by ODOT. Um, so any changes or improvements to that need to be um in line with ODOT design guidance. Um, the next being collectors, so those are some of the um streets that are responsible for distributing trips between local streets and arterials. So you can see those in the the green there um and the orange. And then the last one being the residential local streets. Um, included in this is recommended cross-sections for um each of the street types. So uh specifically those within the city, so the major and minor collectors. Um, as well as the local street cross-section. Um, getting into the pedestrian side of things, so thinking about recommendations for um where we're building space. Um, for pedestrians, so um. Do want to note that we have identified the need for sidewalk space um along Ocean Road. We know a lot of people walk there. Um, and then also just improvements to the existing sidewalks um along Lenita Avenue. To make sure that those are they're ADA compliant and also opportunities to widen those to better accommodate. Uh, the large pedestrian volume that you all get traveling from downtown out to the beach. Um, proposing a number of different treatments for uh roadways to enhance. Um, or identify space for people bike biking. Um, so you can see everything shown in the blue. Um, lines on this map are uh proposed separated facilities. So looking at options to actually provide um space outside of the existing roadway. For people walking and biking. Um, then also looking at sharrows and advisory bike lanes. So those are really options to um paint um the road. And provide some indication of where people are expected to be traveling. Um, and then the last one being trails. Um, so you can see down in there in green, um the connection um down into the state park. So just some um examples of what that might look like here. So for the separated facilities, um one configuration for that could be having um a wider shared use path. Um, running alongside of the road that provides space for both people walking and biking. Um, on the shallow side of thing, again, this one really just intending to indicate. Um, that people biking should be sharing the road with uh vehicles. And these are really recommended on um the local streets where there's either uh low volume um and or low speed. The um next proposal is the um advisory bike lane. So you can see in that picture, it's actually um a dashed lane on each side of the road. Um, that is space for people walking and biking. Um, and dash just indicating that the car could travel in that if you have kind of two vehicles needing to pass each other. And there's no one in that lane. Um, and then the last one being the trail. Um, so again, this would be space that'd be used by both people walking and biking. Um, and one kind of important component of this is that uh because it's considered a trail. You usually don't have as many challenges with uh needing to uh meet all of the ADA standards. Um, required of like a shared use path or sidewalks. Um, so getting into the Manzanita specific projects. So um the all of the roadways identified with the kind of lighter green. Um, are ones where there's proposed enhancements within the existing um road. To create better space for people walking and biking. Um, or um some of those treatments that we just talked about identifying where they should be. The um blue shown there, um those are all um locations where separated facilities have been identified as a need. Um, a couple of those, I think key ones to highlight here being Classic Street and the Carney City Road. Um, so that does um get into the the county area, um just outside the city limits. Uh, but that is one road where we've heard a lot just about the number of people who want to walk and bike there. But you know that it doesn't feel safe um for people, just given the large vehicles that travel on that down to the state park. So I just want to highlight um some of the high priority projects that have been um identified out of this uh process. So one being um Carmel Road pedestrian enhancements. So we know there's um existing space for people walking and biking on that road today. Um, but this project would focus on identifying opportunities to increase safety. So that could be things like adding additional um vertical delineators uh to uh provide some more separation. to provide some more separation between cars and people biking. Also looking at ways to provide some more separate space for people walking and biking. We heard about the challenges of some of the existing shared facilities. Just recognizing that people might be traveling at different speeds. And then also just improved markings at crossings. Lenita Avenue being another one, so this is kind of at the from Fourth Street to Ocean Road, and this is really just kind of continuing some of the enhancements to that street to make sure that it feels like a main street. And including some of the traffic calming measures, painting, curb extensions, and improving ADA access along that roadway. We also have the Classic Street Bicycle and Pedestrian Enhancement, so this is focused from Manzanita to Lenita, so more within the city, so providing some additional striping, so the advisory bike lanes we just talked about. And again, enhancements at at crossings and making sure that 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 street meets the needs of multiple users. The next project I want to highlight is the Bicycle and Pedestrian Connection to the State Park. And this is one that would fall parallel Classic, so actually from from Dorcas Lane on down to the end of the the UGB. And the long term goal for this one is to provide a separated path to connect people walking and biking. But recognizing that that is an expensive and costly project, you can see identified as a long term there. This is one where taking a phased approach, so constructing a trail in the interim may be easier to achieve and start to provide some of that separation. And then kind of full build out of the the wider shared use path in the future as funding becomes available. So there are about 10 other projects that you can see here on this list. A lot of them really focused on kind of low cost options to improve existing roadways through things like signing, striping, paint, and then also some additional signage directing people to parking and some of those key destinations within the community. Also on there completing trail connections, so continuing build out of the Trails Master Plan that was just completed in 2021. So just here to kind of quickly wrap it up before I take any questions. A component of this was also developing a 20 year financial forecast. So basing it on expenditures and revenues over the last couple of years to kind of project out how much funding might be available for transportation. You can see there on a yearly basis, not a lot, so just over 40,000 over 20 years. Getting closer to a million, but still just a limited amount of of funding that may be available. So included in the TSP will be a number of other options that the city could consider to increase revenue for transportation. So expanding system development charges to include transportation being one. Also opportunities to consider local gas taxes or urban renewal areas. And then transportation utility fees. So all sources that can create revenue that can go directly to transportation improvements. The last section, and just in the interest of time, I won't get into too much detail on all of these. There are also a number of competitive grants that the city could apply for to obtain funding. A really important component of the TSP is that it's an adopted plan. And having these projects identify on an adopted plan that's supported by the community is a requirement and almost all competitive grants, so just by getting this TSP created, you're already kind of starting that first step to acquiring funding and being able to implement some of these projects. So there are a number of different projects available through ODOT and other funding sources that are focused on improving specifically multimodal projects, so some of these regional trail connections or connections to the state park would be very competitive in those those grants. And then just the last one that I'll mention here is the Small City Alotment Program. So that's funding that's available to cities with a population of less than 5,000 and can be used to improve streets that don't have adequate capacity today or that are in disrepair. So as we move through this TSP process, just kind of a note to what happens next. So like I mentioned earlier, this TSP is really going to set a vision for Manzanita's transportation system, provide direction for city staff and city council when making transportation and land use decisions. But as I just mentioned, to implement the projects, the city will need to apply for competitive grants or explore other funding sources. And then just one last note there that, as I mentioned earlier, these projects will all need to be refined as part of the design process. So some immediate next steps here, we will be publishing the draft TSP and then also taking this to Planning Commission to kind of start that hearing process and also solicit input from them. That'll really lead us into developing a final TSP and TSP that can be used in that adoption process. I will stop there and answer any questions.
Thank you, Kara. Oh, Mayor, I think you're muted.
Once we get this adopted, we can finally put in system development charges for transportation. We can start applying for grants for repairs. We can really hone in on some of the things that we've been waiting on. How long does it take for all of this to? I mean, once we adopt it, Kara, how long does it, what what are we looking at time wise before we can start asking for money?
Leila, maybe I'll let you speak to that because that's really kind of on on the city side of things and kind of how you want to prioritize which of these grants and and things you might be applying for.
Yeah, I mean, first thing we need to do is adopt the TSP, so the next step would be to share this with Planning Commission, solicit their feedback, and then get the final TSP and then take that through the adoption process through city council, which you'd adopt basically via resolution, so we need to go through some steps to get it adopted as part of the comp plan, so there's some specific steps we'd need to take there. But that would be the next step, and then once the TSP is adopted, we then have to go back and do some amendments to our ordinances, as Kara mentioned, so there's the implementing side of it.
It sounds wonderful. Kara, you did a great job. You really did, all those maps. I I was at the open house and I was so impressed with with the the short and the long term plans both, so very nicely done. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from?
I have a question from a citizen. Where where could they contact you if they wanted to pursue a conversation about something specific?
Yeah, so the project website's actually the the best place. We're in the process of getting that all updated right now. And you can actually find both James and Caroline's email on there on the ODOT side. And then otherwise on the city side, just coordinating with Leila can get us in contact.
Sounds good. Okay, thank you. Anything else, Leila?
No, there's no other questions. I just want to say thanks to Kara. It's been a long slog, so, and not a slog, a lot of good work has gone into this, and I I think that came out with the presentation, so good work, team. Appreciate you and Carolyn and James being here tonight.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you all, and thanks for everyone that's provided input along the way.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, Leila, it looks like the next item on the agenda is the Stormwater System Development Charges Update. You're providing that, I think.
I am, yeah, thank you. So I wanted to give an update because when we met last month, I think we were all hoping and anticipating adoption of a resolution to establish some new system development charges. But our legal review and some looking back at the ordinance that allows us to put in place system development charges, the attorney and I discovered they're really the methodology, so we had to do two things, adopt a methodology, and then you adopt updates to the fee, and what we thought we were doing was adopting an update to the fee, but we weren't able to establish where the methodology was adopted. So in an abundance of caution, what we're doing is we're actually going to go back and we're going to adopt methodology, and it is new methodology anyway, which requires us to go through a series of notifications to do that, so what we need to do now and what we've done is we've issued notice of a proposed change, and that needs to be done 90 days prior to the city council's first hearing on the matter. The statute requires that we maintain a list of interested parties, and if we don't, there are ways that we can meet sort of the spirit of of that ORS, which we've elected to do two of those things, which is mailing a letter to every address in the city of Manzanita as well as publishing it in a local paper. So we're doing that, and then we need to post the methodology, which will be posted on our website 60 days in advance, it'll be up closer to to 100 of the first hearing. And then what we're working with the city attorney on is actually adopting an ordinance that will replace 91-4, so that's the ordinance that establishes SDCs to clean up some ambiguity, too. We thought it was a good time to sort of clean out the cobwebs. Ordinance hasn't been updated in quite some time. So what we'll come back to you with then is basically the way the timing shakes out is that we will have the first reading in June. Because we also have to post the ordinance two weeks in advance. 90 days gets us three days after the May regular session, so we're kind of into to June by then. So we'll post the ordinance mid mid May, hold the first reading in June. Adoption, assuming council approves it, would occur in July, and then it would go into effect 30 days later, so just doing it right, just takes a few more steps than we hoped. But at least it'll be clean, updated, methodology adopted, everything, you know, T's crossed and I's dotted, so just wanted to share that with you all in the community, so folks are aware of the timeline and what's what's going on with that, so.
So question, with this timeline, will we should by that time have the transportation system adopted, is that right? Do you think?
I should hope so, yeah.
So we could maybe at the time when we write this new ordinance, include system development charges for transportation?
Well, so we're at the end stage of the SDC's process for storm, so the first step is establishing the plan. Then you actually have to go through and establish the methodology, do the analysis, and come up with rates, and so we won't be there yet. We'll have just adopted the plan.
Okay, all right, and the Planning Commission is involved in?
Yes.
As well.
Yeah.
All right.
Does the methodology apply to all SDCs? Or is it specific for each one?
It's specific for each one. Each utility has a different way of calculating its the capital expansion, so storm's different than water, water's different than transportation.
So we'll just be working through these as we go?
That's how we do. But once you have a methodology established, for example, once this is in place, then we can do like annual inflation updates, you know, we can and then if a few years down the road you want to evaluate, you have a new capital plan, for example, that's when you would redo the SDC. But you wouldn't be redoing the methodology, you'd be updating the fee. So what we're doing is actually updating the methodology, which is a much a different, a more significant step. With transportation, you'd need to up, you'd need to adopt a methodology, and we'd actually also need to probably update the ordinance to allow us to issue a transportation SDC, because right now we don't have that in the ordinance, so there's quite a few steps that need to be put in place.
Okay. Outside the transportation, which we haven't started yet, and the stormwater, we also have water, and what other SDCs do we have?
Parks.
Parks. Thanks.
Yeah. Any other questions about that? Cool.
Okay, so we move on to new business. We're a little bit behind schedule here.
I'll kick it fast as I can.
All right, we'll go, we'll speed through.
Okay, great. Well, normally this would be something I would put on the consent agenda, but I think with the new council and so forth, I wanted to just put this out here first, so I'm asking for have two sort of administrative actions for contracts, one to approve for planning and one for financial advisory services. And I wanted to kind of highlight sort of how the city uses consultants, because that's something that's been raised a few times. And we do it kind of in two key ways. One is consultants really that operate as sort of staff and support staff and then projects. And so right now we have consultants that are on projects, so City Hall, the consultants that are assigned to City Hall are project based, it's the owners, the architect, the CMGC. Then we have the Eco Northwest Project, the Budget Revenue Diversification, so that's another consultant that we have under contract for that work. So that's it in terms of the project side of things. When it comes to staffing, there are sort of five areas in which we hire out consultants to support staff and basically serve to some extent as staff, so Josh, our IT guy, Josh is a consultant to the city, and we operate with a contract with Josh. Our legal team is under contract with the city, and so they constitute one of our consultant teams. And then our auditor is actually works, you know, is on contract with the city to do our auditor, although they're obviously independent of us. And then we also have the two other places where I need support are planning and financial. And so that's what I'm bringing today is the financial contract is a small contract, because that's really more about having someone I can tap into with subject matter expertise. The firm I'm proposing spokes have an MBA, they've been working in government finance for 20 years and can be there to help sort of inform things like financial projections, or if there are other things that our finance manager has specific questions about, that subject matter expertise would be helpful. So that's, I think, a benefit to the city, and then the second contract would be for providing planning services, so we had a person under contract we've been working with for some time, Walt Windowski. His contract was with actually Morgan CPS, and Walt and Morgan CPS, Morgan CPS is sort of moving into retirement. Walt is now on his own, so we've been operating under a direct appointment process, and so what I did is I initiated a an intermediate procurement process for a planner so that we could go through the appropriate contracting channels to get somebody on board. And I received two proposals. I reached out to about five or six different firms and received two proposals, was expecting three, but the third actually they were going to submit, and then one of them's spouse got a job out of town, and so they left and didn't end up submitting. But we got two good proposals, one from Walt and one from 3J. And I'm putting forward the 3J proposal, and I wanted to highlight a couple of things about that proposal as to why, is I think the city's needs are getting more diverse and complex. And so one of the things that we benefit from greatly in terms of the services like our legal team provides is subject matter expertise in different areas of subjects, so if I need help with human resources, I have access to, you know, folks that are are employment labor experts or land use experts. 3J provides a broader bench of services than one sort of generalized planner can, so things related to wetlands or water engineering and things of that nature, long term planning, which is going to become a bigger load for us in the coming years, we start to work towards our comp plan, so. load for us in the coming years, we start to work towards our comp plan. So I think it's, we're at a place now where we sort of need to diversify the skill set that we have access to, and I believe 3J can provide those services. I do want to point out their fees higher. It's a bit higher than what we pay Walt, but I think a lot of the fees that we get back from cost of service do incorporate the consultant's rate, and so we may be making some adjustments to our planning fees in order to accommodate that. But the fees that we pay administratively for those planning services will be a bit higher. I think there's sufficient resources for that and for the level of expertise that I think the city needs at this time. So, so those are my two requests, and the contract I'm putting forward for 3J would be an amount not to exceed, it would basically the way I'd like to set up the terms is that it's an annual agreement that is renewed on the basis of performance, and that it's renewed by me every year if they indeed meet that requirement. And, but the amount of the contract would not exceed 150, because then we'd have to move to a different procurement method. So so those are the two things that I'm asking for tonight, and be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
I did ask, I did have a question about 3J, and I know you and I have talked about this before, but in Exhibit C where they talk about their scope of work, they say assist in the development and updating of the city's comprehensive plan and related ordinances. Is this the group that would be hired to help us pull, update our comprehensive plan, or is that a separate group?
So that would be a separate contract altogether, whomever we hire, whoever I would like to hire these folks, because I'm going to need essentially a staff planner on our side helping with some of that long-term work. And so I was planning on leaning on the contract planner to provide like that side of it. They may want to they, if we, we will be putting out a separate RFP for the comprehensive.
Okay, that's different.
This is for, yeah, contract planning services.
But they will do some, I mean, according to their scope.
Yeah, so for example, the TSP, we have draft ordinance language. I would kind of pass that off to the planner and say, how do we implement this? Or what are, you know, get their feedback on how to move forward with that through planning commission. That's a great question, though.
Okay. Any comments or discussion?
Leila, with the planning contract, I'm assuming that the, our planning commission's gotten pretty comfortable or cozy, whatever with, I shouldn't have said cozy, comfortable working with Walt, and now there's going to be a change, and it's a bigger firm, and they are coming from Beaverton. I know they do a lot of work up and down the coast, but will there be any sort of opportunity for any kind of sort of onboarding to get the planning commission and the new consultants more familiar with each other? Is that just going to have to come design project by project?
I love the, I love the thinking about that, Jerry. It's one of the reasons why I ended up canceling the training we had scheduled in the 13th, is I wanted to get through this step and then get our new commissioners on board. And I think that's a great idea. I was going to, when it was appropriate, talk with our planner and see is there a way for them to provide some level of training and do that interaction. I will say, you know, I had Karen help review these proposals as well, and had a great conversation with her about it, too. And, you know, also just, I want to give a shout out to Walt, who's total gentleman and really understood what, where we were going and where we were headed, and was actually supportive of the city taking this direction. So I just want to acknowledge Walt and the contributions he's made.
I was, I was going to ask if Karen was involved, and it sounds like she was.
Yes.
And 3J, they're familiar with some of the projects that we've had in the last few years, I assume.
Yeah, one of the, I guess, attractive things about their proposal is that they are they do contract planning for, they were in Bay City, but Bay City hired a planner. We called them to ask, like, why aren't they with you anymore? And, but they said, you know, they're a great response and et cetera. But they're in Garibaldi, Rockaway, and they also do some work for Tillamook, so they're really, you know, they understand what's happening with the housing dynamic and, you know, all the kind of issues that are really prevalent in the North Coast.
Great. Thank you.
So we would put this forth for a vote to approve the 3J and also the financial services. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Okay. And put it to a vote?
We need a second.
Seconded.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, Jenna. Now we put it to a vote. Approve?
All in favor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all right. So Leila, you have those two approved.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you. Nicely done. Yeah, it was, both were really interesting proposals. It's nice to know that 3J's been on the coast so long.
Well, he's, he has a great reputation, too. John does.
Next, Leila, is the amendment to the architect and owner's representative contracts, and we had those in our packet.
You did, yeah. So, and I'm sorry, I'm analog today because of my computer situation, but it's just, it's a, it's a small, it's a request from the design team to do the additional work for the Quonset hut. So that design work actually just got the package last night, haven't looked at it in detail, I'll admit. And then I've also asked the design team to actually extend out the project timeline. So Phase 1 for them actually was supposed to end in November, I think, originally, and then we pushed it out to February to account for the switch to council. And I think with the addition of the Q hut work, and just being mindful of making sure that we have all the information that you need to move forward, in an abundance of caution, I'm asking them to like sort of push it out till April or possibly May. So the proposals here are time and materials to get us to a decision and a bit of an extended timeline, and the additional design work that went into and analyzing saving the Q hut and moving the building to the east side of Underhill Plaza.
Okay, is there, so there's a proposal from Clearing Architect for that amount was $6,940, is that correct?
That's correct, and I can't find Claus's right in front of me, but maybe.
And Claus's request is for
like 3,000.
Oh, is it? Yeah. 3,040. This is Amendment 2. I don't know what the one was before that.
That was an amendment that was made in December to account for, we had assigned two additional community meetings and some additional updates and so forth.
Okay. Is there a discussion on this at all by anybody?
I think we approved it when we, we said particularly on the Q hut that we wanted that research done on the Q hut.
Okay, so this is a
cursory.
Pardon?
It's cursory. This is just approving what we have asked them to do.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
So it'd just be a motion to authorize me to amend the architect and owner's representative contract for additional services outlined in the proposals included in the packet.
And just to be clear, this is work that we assigned them to do in February, January, and that they have completed.
Yes, in part. It's mostly that for the architect for the design piece, but there's some additional resources included to extend the timeline out. And those will only be billed if used. So if you decide, you know, in March, then it'd be less.
So, Leila, I'm still having some trouble figuring out the timeline and the decision tree on the City Hall project. Appears to me that things have gotten kind of muddy as far as, you know, I don't know if we need a decision tree or something that
I think you do.
When we're going to vote on certain things, what if, what is the consequence if we approve something, you know, or what is the consequence if we don't approve something? And, and kind of a timeline, because I think not only myself, but maybe some others in the community are a little lost on that timeline. I was impressed with the presentation on the TSP and how they laid out their timeline, and just wondered if that was something that's going to be coming down the pike for us, or?
Yeah, no, that's a great point. So we had a timeline, and that timeline's been shifted in the last month, so we had a really nice sort of here's where we are. Critical path, decision tree, as you say. We're, you know, we've requested to have a special meeting next week to give you the findings from the Q hut, because that's really the next step. So that was a new decision point that was added, so it makes sense that folks are a little confused. So as part of that presentation, I'm working on kind of like here are the decision points, and we're starting to assign them to dates within council meetings. So we'll have that as part of our update next week, but we did, you know, I do want to clarify, we do have a pretty clear path. We've just sort of we've, we've added a little spur to the track, and so we're just kind of trying to figure out that route. But thank you, and I will for sure make sure that that timeline is clear in terms of where we need to get to to make to the next step.
So also to be clear, so we do have a meeting next Wednesday.
Yeah, I think I've heard from like three out of five of you, so I just tend to have the
On the calendar, it wasn't on there, so I just.
Yeah, that's what I'm waiting. If you all are here, then we will notice it and let the world know. I'll put you on the spot. Can you make it?
Yeah, I replied.
I need to speak out here a little bit, and I know it goes against the grain, but I've been to several neighborhood meetings in the last two weeks, and you know, the public support is there in some pockets, but for the majority of the people, this is still an issue that they're trying to figure out. Do we need the City Hall? Can we afford it? Actually, we know we need a City Hall. We want our city staff to have a nice place to work, but what can we afford? And, you know, I laid out some numbers. Just, just with the hard numbers that we got from Jason and the property were $5,481,000. Is there, I know, Leila, you and I talked once about getting public sentiment, and you had talked about possibly a phone survey or some sort of ballot or something that could go out so that we know we're representing the citizens' interest when we go continue down this path, which is, you know, the biggest expenditure the city's ever made.
Can I, I, I think before we get that far, I know that my, my decision moving forward with City Hall will come down to the conversation that we have with the financial planner, with a financial forecaster that will show us our different options of how to pay for it. So I, I think the statement that the city hasn't, the community hasn't bought into it is I, I disagree with that. We've seen from Invision Manzanita and the City Hall projects that people have bought into this. We just need to make sure that we can pay for it, and I, I'm going to hold my vote until we see that.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, so looking for a motion to approve the two Claus Group and the Architect?
So moved.
So moved, seconded?
Seconded.
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. There you go, Leila.
Thank you so much.
And we have, moving along, we have Community Reinvestment Act funding is Nina? Nina, there someplace?
Somewhere.
Here I am.
There you are. They can hear you. Thank you. Thank you for coming tonight.
Yes, I'm just going to share my screen if I can find it. Sorry. There it is. Okay, can you see me?
We can see it.
Okay, great. Okay, the purpose of this discussion tonight is just to kind of start the conversation about how we want to spend the money that we received from the American Rescue Plan. So the city of Manzanita received roughly 147,000, and the goal of the program for spending this money is to basically just bounce back from COVID. So what can the money be used for? There's four main categories for it. The first one is replacing lost revenue. So with this one, we determine how much revenue was lost, and then we take that amount, and basically we can dump it anywhere we want. We can put it in the general fund, we can do road building and maintenance, all kinds of things. So it, this one offers the most flexibility, but it requires a lot of additional reporting and compliance based on that lost revenue that we are reporting. The second one is public health and economic impacts. So this can be used for capital expenditures that support eligible COVID-19 public health or economic responses. So there's a lot of ways that you can spend it here also, and some of those ways are providing financial assistance to small businesses that were impacted through revenue loss because of COVID. And just a side note for some of you that don't know, in 2020, when COVID hit, we did expend our grant money in the Tourism Promotion Fund and gave all the small businesses in Manzanita a small check for that. Other programs or services that respond to public health and the negative impacts of the pandemic, certain affordable housing developments, and then providing assistance to impacted households through aid for reemployment, job training, et cetera. The next one is providing premium pay for eligible workers performing essential work. So this would offer additional support to essential workers who are working in person in key economic sectors. Employees must be below a specified wage threshold. They must be exempt from overtime or submit justification that the premium pay is justified. In our case, all of our essential workers being Public Works and Police are all eligible for overtime, so that would be probably not as applicable to us. And the fourth one, that's probably what most of you will be interested in, is investing in water, sewer, stormwater, and broadband infrastructure. So this aims to make necessary investments to improve access to clean water, supporting vital wastewater and stormwater infrastructure, and expanding affordable access to broadband internet, which most of us would probably appreciate. I reached out to a lot of different cities around us to find out kind of what they did with their money, and most cities are sort of dumping it in this box. So you can do things like facilities to improve drinking water quality, transmission and distribution improvements, repairing and replacing stormwater infrastructure, so potentially it could be used to fund some of the work that's being done on Dorcas, things like that. And then what can't the money be used for? So you can't use it for debt service, replenishing, financial reserves, settlements, or any project that undermines COVID-19 mitigation practices. And so the reason we're starting to talk about this now is that we have to obligate the funds by December 31st, 2024, and we have to expend all of the funds by 2026. So if we elect to invest it in a capital project, it's something that we would need to start thinking about now, since we have to have that completed by 2026. And that's all I've got for you.
So what are the timelines on Dorcas?
That would be a Dan question, or Leila?
Yeah, Dorcas is underway, so six months construction timeline. You know, it's something that we could look towards our capital improvement plan, so it could be a funding source to help fund a project within there that's within the guidelines. The point of this was to try to get just you aware, we have this money, we have to budget for The point of this was to try to get just you aware, we have this money, we have to budget for it every year, but the councils really never had a full discussion on what to do with it. So we wanted to share the information and we can come back and have a further discussion about it once councils had a chance to look through it a little bit more. But if you have initial thoughts, you can certainly.
Yeah, well, you would come back with some recommendations of what you thought might be appropriate for that.
Yeah, it would be nice to get some feedback just generally if, if folks have some ideas about the different buckets that Nina just went through in terms of where you would like to see the, the resources.
And the total, the total amount is again, what?
$147,000, right Nina?
Nina, could we have access to that PowerPoint, maybe on the website, so we could go through it again?
I think that would be We can post that and come back to a work session, perhaps?
Yeah, that would be great. That would be great. I'd, I'd really like to go through things a little bit slower. And, and take, take a look at the restrictions again and the timeline.
Yep, for sure. We just wanted y'all to have a little taste of it. So I'll put it on April's work session.
Okay, that would be great.
There's also a really helpful document on the Department of Treasury that, that it's like 48 pages and it details all of those buckets and the really specific requirements and all of that information. So that might be helpful for you too. Thank you.
Nina, can I just ask you, it looked to me quickly like some of the buckets, certainly the first couple that you talked about, there had to be some sort of nexus between how you were spending the money and how, how your community took a hit during COVID. In the bucket that you seem to prefer, and I would agree with you, that's the most likely spot for us perhaps, doesn't really look to me like there's any case to be made that we're spending this money here because we suffered some kind of setback in COVID. I don't know if that's, if I'm reading that right or not. I, I do think given that we had a surge in S C R tax revenue during COVID because of COVID, we didn't suffer as much as a lot of communities fiscally from COVID, but that doesn't appear to be an issue, does it?
No, no, I would say the revenue replacement would be a difficult one. I mean, there was a couple quarters maybe that were a little shy when we completely shut down, but for the most part, I think revenues have been up because of COVID, not in the general.
Okay, good.
Okay, thank you Nina for your time. Next is the E V C N B Annual Training Special Event Permit. And Leila, you were going to talk about that.
Yeah, I think, I wonder if Lee is here tonight, Lee Hilton Brand. Yeah, Lee, feel free to chime in here. But so our special event permits, those are typically, we bring these to council when they involve Underhill Plaza. So organizations like to use Underhill Plaza. And E V C N B is one. We have an annual permit that we, at least since I've been here, have been approving for E V C N B to do emergency preparedness and response training. They are very well organized with this, as you can imagine, and they coordinate directly with the Public Works Director on dates that they have that. So this provides them kind of a blanket permit for the year. They coordinate directly with us on days that they want to use it. We require them to have all the insurance and all of that. So we just set it up once and it just becomes more efficient for them to have those training events as opposed to coming back to council every time they want to use the space. So this is their annual permit. Lee, if you're here, feel free to offer any thoughts or comments?
Well, thank you, Leila. I'm, I'm pleased to continue this activity that's been going on for two years now. This is essentially, as you indicated, a renewal of a permit extended to us both in 2021 and 2022. And the space is really critical because it allows us to become familiar with new equipment and practice skills that we may need to implement in an emergency. And these events also create team building and collaboration. We always, as you indicated, always notify city staff ahead of our desire to use a site. And we understand that availability might be limited by construction or other city business, and we would respectful, respectfully not utilize a site during those times. Making it an annual permit limits the numbers of applications, and it certainly lessens the work by city staff. Any questions?
I attended last year and it was fantastic.
Thanks, Brad.
So it sounds like we, uh, thank you, Lee, for doing this. And it, it sounds like we have approval for the permit. Is that correct, Leila?
Yeah, I think just someone wants to make a motion.
Someone wants to make So moved?
I won't make, Linda make the motion. I'll make the motion.
And a second?
I'll second.
All right. And then all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, there you go, Lee. Thank you very much for doing this.
Thank you.
Congratulate E V C for celebrating 15 years also.
Oh my gosh, 15 years. That is really something. And I saw where Chief Hearth has been 20 years in
Yeah, I've got a whole speech at the end.
That's part of your, okay, yeah, I was excited about that too.
Oh yeah, I had to publicly embarrass Eric as much as I can.
So we have a short-term rental mission statement. Joe, I can see you there.
Yep, I'm here. Thanks. Education is a key component to our proposed mission statement. So in that spirit, Linda and I wanted to give you a brief, I promise it'll be brief, history of what's been done in the past few years. Over three years ago, the council formed the S T R work group, and it was a temporary group solely designed to update the 10-year-old ordinance 10-3. In addition to going over each line of 10-3 with a fine-tooth comb, the work group conducted a survey to determine people's concerns regarding neighborhood livability. We had close to 500 responses. And it identified the following as the top issues. Noise was number one. And then parking, lighting, garbage, and then a couple concerns about how to register complaints. So as a response, we made the following changes. Regarding noise, this is one the council agreed to make citywide. From the hours of 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM, the D B A, which is the decibel A, which is what the human ear hears, should be below 55. Regarding parking, off-street parking is now limited to the number of, sorry, yeah, off-street parking, in other words, on your lot, is now limited to the number of bedrooms plus one. And on-street overnight parking is limited to one car. And each S T R has to show a map with all the spaces to renters. Lighting, we now have a dark sky ordinance for S T Rs. At the point where the house is inspected, which is every three years, so they had up to three years to get this in place. An S T R has to have only downward-facing outdoor lights with no visible bulbs. This, by the one, is one I'd also like to see citywide, but that's, that's up to you. Garbage, S T Rs must have side yard or walk-up service. And then in answer to general complaints, we put in as part of the ordinance that you need to have a plaque on every home with contact info. And then once a complaint is received, the owner or agent is to immediately make direct contact with the renters in person within 20 minutes if necessary. And this was a change from attempt to make a contact, which is a big difference. We made a lot of other changes. However, some strategy and other changes were outside our scope. And so we offered several ideas to be considered by a new, long-term, wider-focused S T R committee. This included an 800 number for complaints, a city-owned overflow parking lot, density resolution ideas, emergency supplies, a code enforcement component, an H O A exclusion to the 17.5% calculation. And the last one, form a longstanding committee to move outside the scope of 10-3 and to handle continuing, continuing livability issues. I'm very proud of what the work group accomplished, and I know that the new S T R committee can do more because it won't have a couple restrictions that the prior group faced. The prior group, as, as you heard this afternoon and through me, faced a restricted mission, 10-3 only. And that restrained our focus to only one piece of the puzzle, which is the city ordinances. Secondly, the prior committee focused back rather than forward by trying to enhance solutions that were written in 210 for a very different time with fewer challenges. So what's changed? In, I took Mark Beach's history class this month. And he had an early 1900s flyer that advertised Manzanita as a great place to build a vacation rental home. The 17.5% S T R number has been in effect for almost 30 years. 30 years. But here's a couple differences that Patrick talked about this afternoon. When 954 and 10-3 were first written, news came from paper newspapers, not iPhones. Social media was just gaining steam and the app-based economy was just getting started. So our two main tools for containing tourism still worked. Our number one tool is that we had controlled marketing. This message about how beautiful Manzanita was, was word of mouth. I was born and raised in Portland. In 1999, when my realtor suggested I look at Manzanita for a vacation rental home, I said, where's Manzanita? I had never heard of it. Number two, we have limited hotel stock. Seaside and Cannon Beach have many high-rise hotels. I personally think that Manzanita made the right choice by limiting building height to 21 and 28.5 feet, which means no large hotels, no high-rises. But we can't contain the secret of Manzanita anymore. Social media reports that we're the 10th best small town in America. Airbnb and VRBO and other internet rental options have become ubiquitous. I think the new S T R committee is built for this new challenge. We won't start at the end at existing solutions. We'll start at the beginning with gathering information, all the old and new channel challenges and assessing the new root causes. We'll work together to build real solutions built and based on today's problems. In 2022, the council passed a resolution forming the current committee. Its stated purpose, I'm going to paraphrase a little bit, to consider amendments to 10-3 and other issues in order to enhance, enhance livability, to examine and weigh options for future livability opportunities as directed by council, and to assist in crafting informational packages that can be distributed to the public to help all parties to understand the procedures set out in 10-3. To that end, the committee has constructed a mission statement that mirrors these purposes. It doesn't limit us to any narrow-focused problems, such as density, and it's positive in outlook. So I will read it to you. "Our mission is to propose policies on Manzanita short-term rentals, which will enhance the city's livability, consider financial health, and inform residents, managers, and visitors about these policies. We're asked, we ask that you approve our mission, and with this afternoon's discussion on the survey, we'll begin our job with that new survey to listen to the community's feelings and concerns regarding short-term rentals and work to propose solutions for council consideration."
Thank you, Joe. This was the mission statement that you originally laid out as a committee, is that right?
This is the committee's mission statement, yes.
Okay, this is the one that had the educational piece in there. I'm not seeing, but it looks like it's incorporated in there. All right.
And inform residents, managers, and visitors about these policies.
So that's the education piece. Okay. Is there any discussion about the mission statement? Or can we send these good people on their way? You, you guys are picking up speed as you go. Quite a group. Is there a motion to approve? The mission statement? So moved? And is it seconded?
I'll second.
Thank you, Jenna. And all in favor?
Aye.
It's like it's unanimous, I think. Are you there, Brad?
Yep.
Okay.
All right. Another review of the questions for the, that you guys presented this afternoon before they go out.
Our next meeting is on the, next Friday, the 20th. And what I think we're planning on doing is trying to get it all kind of reorganized before that meeting. And then have the entire committee weigh in on it, make any other suggestions, and then send it back out to all of you via email or Google Docs or something like that. So you can all take a look at it, yeah.
Okay, could you also send me or maybe the rest of the council the the presentation that Patrick made as far as some of those first few slides? I just wanted to look at some of those again. Thanks.
And for the public, we'll post that on the city's meeting page too.
Did you hear that, Patrick? I know he's on this call.
Email us your presentation, please.
All right, Joe, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your good work. We are, we are creating a motion right now, which is really feeling very good.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is the Planning Commission appointments. I have a statement that I would like to read. "My decision to deny the previous slate of candidates for the Planning Commission at the January 4th City Council meeting, my first in office, was not done lightly. Since mid-December, I knew these appointments would be on the agenda, and I reached out to mayors. I met at the League of Oregon City Classes in early December for advice and input. Two mayors in particular read through Manzanita's charter and the rules of procedure and confirmed that although a procedure was in place, there were flaws. Plus, it had not been previously tested. Both mayors confirmed that our charter, our constitution superseded the rules of the procedure, and that the mayor had the right granted through the charter to make the appointments unless the charter was changed through a vote of the citizens. Next, I went to our city manager and two councillors and told them I planned to ask for extended time to review all the applicants before making the appointments. There were no secrets. Upholding the duties of mayor to the best of my abilities, to me, meant researching the process and all the applicants rather than rubber-stamping three names about whom I knew little. Councilman Mayor Lee had previously expressed the same concern. While the council spent work sessions to improve the select committee process, I followed the similar steps. In addition, I outlined the skillset of three of the four current commissioners with an eye towards balance. I met with Jenna and Karen to share their interview conversations. I used the decision matrix on all of the candidates based on the criteria, and I interviewed all of the applicants who were not previously interviewed. I met with Karen again to understand what issues the Planning Commission would be facing. And ultimately, I selected three candidates whom I felt would bring the best balance to the current Planning Commission and the multitude of heavy issues they are facing. I also want to add that I was deeply saddened with the initial slate when it was made public on December 30th. No doubt, with more experience under my belt, this horrific embarrassment could have been avoided. And my sincerest apologies to those of you who were awarded the position only to have it taken away. The spirit of volunteerism is a cornerstone to our community's future and is very much appreciated. This council worked long and hard in January to improve and finalize the select committee process that was approved today, with the hope that we have created a process to provide fairness, transparency, and balanced input from citizens and all council members alike. For the two-year appointment, that goes to Frank Squillo. Frank lives full-time in the urban growth boundary, which was a factor important to Jenna and Karen. He's a retail owner in the Halum, so brings a connection to our neighboring He's a retail owner in the Halum, so brings a connection to our neighboring community. Frank has previous experience on the planning commission in the Oaklawn neighborhood near Dallas, Texas. John Collier is one of the four-year appointments. John is a full-time resident of Manzanita, a graduate from Oklahoma with a business degree in studies and regional planning. He retired after working forty-three years as an architect, mainly on large commercial jobs. John believes all plans should be complete before they go to the planning commission, including land use, trees, utilities, environmental impact, livability issues, trails, and traffic easements, et cetera. He has previous experience on the planning commission in Cathmont, Washington. The second four-year appointment is Thomas Christ. Tom is a second homeowner, which was important to Jenna and Karen, who has spent forty years as a lawyer and thirty years as a part-time judge. He is currently active in both and hopes and plans to retire to Manzanita. Tom has served on local commissions, boards, councils, and committees, and is familiar with Oregon statewide land use planning laws. He has handled some of these cases professionally, and he describes himself as a judge who asks questions. I would like to thank everyone for your patience and also the strong support that I received from citizens completing the process. Thank you. And congratulations to those on the commission. The next is a amendment to council rules of procedure.
May I make a statement before we move on?
Yes, Jenna.
I feel like I need to say my, my sense. I also want to thank the applicants and the community for sticking with us as we learn to work together as a council and nail down the rules for committee appointments. In all honesty, I am exhausted and frustrated and embarrassed by the process and our actions so far. I do think we made a step forward this afternoon. An appointment process was put in place last year to address concerns from the community regarding cronyism and the transparency of the mayoral, mayoral appointment process. The council's discussions over several months last spring and summer regarding the appointment process were both thoughtful and thorough. The process was adopted on August third of last year. This process was followed to make the appointments to the planning commission. The selection committee was appointed. Criteria was established and approved by council. The application was posted, and we received ten applications. The selection committee reviewed these applications. As a team, the committee produced a list of candidates that fully met the criteria city council approved. Those applicants were Brad Berman, Thomas Campbell, Thomas Christ, Mark Kessner, and Fink Sequel. Everyone's applications are currently posted online. The selection committee, committee proceeded to interview these candidates. It was difficult to narrow the list down to three, but we came up with a slate for appointments. At the January fourth city council meeting, Planning Commission Chair Karen Yerka presented a slate for candidates for the mayor's appointment. Instead of taking the recommendations that are consideration or discussing any concerns before the meeting with the selection committee, Mayor Simmons publicly rejected both the candidates and the selections process for unknown and unspecified reasons. This past month, we have worked hard to revise, and I'd say more, tweak the process, and we will make a move to adopt new rules in our next agenda items tonight. I've looked over the changes to the original process. These include, we've added a second councillor to the selection committee. We've agreed to post completed applications to the city's website. The selection committee will interview all candidates, and a slate of nominees and ranked list of qualified applicants will be presented to the mayor. Looking at this, I think these are not significant changes. These tweaks would not change the final decision made by the selection committee regarding the planning commission appointments. The mayor acted outside the rules of the August three appointment, August three appointment rules and newly revised rules we've been working on since the middle of January. She appointed her own slate, the exact opposite of the attention of the new rule. With the adoption of the revised rules tonight, I hope we add at least a little peace of mind to our community that this won't happen again, that our mayor will be held accountable to follow the rules. I continue to ask myself, what is best for the city? This council has a lot of important work to do. We have city hall, the budget, the comprehensive plan, infrastructure. I do not negate the importance of the applicant, applicant appointments to the planning commission. We just can't be spending our time and resources tearing down processes that aren't broken. The outcome of this action so far has been creating a divide in our community where one should not exist. I hope and expect we will do better moving forward. Thank you for letting me share.
Thank you, Jenna. Any other comments? Jerry?
Yeah, I just, I don't have a prepared statement. I appreciate statements from both Deb and Jenna. First, I want to welcome Frank and Tom and John to the planning commission. My comments right now have nothing to do with any of you. I trust that you will do a great job on a planning commission, so congratulations on, on your appointment. I do regret that the mayor began her speech by referencing her communication with two other mayors. One mayor I don't think you talked to was Mike Scott. Mike Scott's right here in Manzanita. You got some advice that led you down this path you took by talking to folks who are not familiar with the way things have been done around here and the changes we tried to make to address a perception that there was a problem with the way the mayor had filled committees. And I think hindsight's twenty-twenty, but I do think you would have been well-served by seeking answers closer to home before you took the, the path you took. We learned this week from our city attorney that there is ambiguity in the charter with respect to a mayor's appointment powers. And that ambiguity has created this difficult scenario we've been through the last month. So your mayor friends who told you it's crystal clear are at odds with our city attorney's analysis of the charter. I do think that we have made some improvements to the rules to reduce the opportunity for that ambiguity to cause this problem to reoccur in the future. And I, I agree with Jenna that we got too much work to do in front of us to spend any more energy on this particular episode. I'm glad it's behind us, and again, I do congratulate and welcome John and Frank and Tom to the planning commission. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Moving on to amendment to the council rules of procedure is that the process that we went through this afternoon, the select committee process, I think we hammered it out. I think everybody was in agreement. We looked at it before we went, finished our work session.
So, Mary, you might want to describe the process and maybe the specific changes that were made.
Let me see if I have those.
And maybe, or maybe Jenna, since she made those changes, might be easier for her to do that.
Yes, I am, I'm happy to walk through those. All of them are just our little changes.
Mayor Simmons, Jenna has those changes. Would you like her to?
That would be great. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, and I can share my screen.
That would be great.
So, this, we, I believe we walked through this on January twenty-fourth and came to basically this final version. Updates that were made today are in eight, two EF. So here, a member of the selection committee will present a slate of nominees and a ranked list of additional qualified candidates, if any, to the mayor. The change here was a shortlist. We removed the, the terminology shortlist and added qualified candidates. We changed some. Just.
We added that we were going to, that the mayor would choose from the qualified list.
Yes, that the mayor shall make appointments based on the selection committee's recommendations or the qualified list. And then the last change that we made was with removals. All appointment persons may be removed by a majority of city council. We have removed the mayor from that.
So do, is there anything else?
There needs to be a motion, I think, to accept.
Yeah, right. Is there a motion to approve the adjustments? Brad, okay, I can't hear you, but I saw your hand go up. And is there a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. And all in favor, please? Like it's unanimous. All right. Thank you. We also have a work session.
Sorry, just a minute to interrupt. Do we take questions from the community on this?
Did we take?
It looks like Joe Newhouse has her hand up, and I don't know if we take comments.
You know, I think the question is, if we could clarify if section G will be for all selected candidates. So section G?
Yeah. Do I need to, do you want me to?
Read it. Yeah, if you'd read it, that'd be great.
Okay. The mayor shall make appointments based on the selection committee's recommendation or elect to appoint candidates from the qualified list. The mayor and/or selection committee will notify all applicants regarding appointments once confirmed by the mayor.
I'm not hearing anything.
And that's?
I don't, I don't hear any, anybody speaking?
Do you, do you hear me speaking?
I hear you.
Oh, okay, okay.
Linda, was that just to clarify?
That was just a clarifying question and that it would, would include all committees, and it does.
Is, is the process, isn't the process different for the budget committee? Didn't we go through that?
Right. The, that's state mandated, and that would be, it would go through the F, which is the, the, the selection of nominations and qualified candidates. And then it would go to city council, not the mayor, for budget, for budget questions.
Okay. So any, any other further discussion on the amendment to the procedure? Okay. Work session change discussion. Well, I think that was just that we were going to move the work sessions on to the following week. Is that right?
Yeah, I just wanted the council to make the formal change. Tell staff when, and then I thought I would use the opportunity to see if there's been any more thought to whether we meet in person or not, so staff can start to prepare for that.
Well, I, I would like to ask, since both Mayor Simmons and I will be out of town on March fifteenth, which would be our, if we went to the day after, I would.
You mean February fifteenth, Linda?
No, no, it's in March. So what I'm asking, what I'd like to propose is that we keep it the way it is through March. That would allow both the mayor and I to attend the work session in March and then move to April and move, and then move it to the Tuesday afterwards and potentially move to public meetings at that point. So I'm, I'm personally making a request that we keep it as it is right now through March and then go to the new schedule in April. If people wouldn't mind.
I'm okay with that. I, I still think that our meeting, our workshop should be the week prior to the council, the regular council meeting.
I would be fine with that.
I'm, I'm, well, now, so the, Jerry's thought was, so Jerry's thought was, and I'm counter, I'm speaking for Jerry, and he will certainly correct me, is that I think we wanted time after the council and then time between the workshop and the next council meeting so that we could gather public input. And Jerry, is that correct, or am I misstating that?
No, that's, that's correct. I mean, I do think either way we go, a week before or three weeks before, is an improvement from having it a couple of hours before.
Yeah, I, yeah.
So I'm not, I'm not gonna die on this particular hill, but honestly, I think three weeks gives us a chance not just to gather input from the public, but invariably, we learn things in our communications with each other at a work session that we then leave the work session and get further clarification from, either from the city manager or some other external source or from permissible conversations among two of us outside of a public meeting. And so, you know, I honestly think that, you know, if, if a good idea comes up at a work session, three weeks is enough time for it to mature into a policy position in some cases at a subsequent council meeting. If you've had a little time for research and development of the idea and input from the public. I don't think you can pull that off in a week. So if we have work sessions a week before a council meeting, there'll be a value, but I, I don't think they'll always result in the same level of maturity of an idea by the time we get to that council meeting. So I'd, I'd go for the three weeks before, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't fight you on one week if that's what most people want to do. And I, and I suppose we could always try and adjust if we need to down, down the road.
My, my only reasoning for the week before is, like today, when we were able to talk through and basically finalize our, our selection committee process. That was nice that we were able to hammer some of these larger items out before we get to this decision since our regular.
I agree with you. I agree with you, though. We've been, we were baking that cake for quite a while.
Well, and you know, the other thing I was thinking with the transportation plan tonight, that took up a lot of time. And I'm wondering if that can't be in a work session, maybe in the future as well, since we didn't need to make a decision at that point.
Yeah, normally it would have been, and it's just the timing issue.
Yeah, yeah, no, and that's fine. I just think, if there may be some kind of limiting of time of presentations or something, we'd like it to be no longer than, would be really.
I tried.
Yeah, you did, you did, you did.
So Jerry, your preference is to have the city council meeting on the first Wednesday after the first Monday, and the work session the week after. Is that correct?
Yeah, I do. I mean, I, I really think that what we've gotten or something to the habit of doing is creating a bit of a frenzy the last couple of days before the council meeting. A lot of, a lot of emails come in, a lot of calls come in, a lot of people want to talk about stuff at the last minute. If we can begin that conversation three weeks before a council meeting by having a work session that's gonna spur some of that conversation, I think it just levels it out for us all. But I can, I, I hear Jenna's argument the other way, and I'm not, as I said, I'm any, anything that gets us off of a work session a couple of hours before a council meeting, I think is an improvement. So I'm, I'm willing to try one week before or three weeks before, whatever the, you know, whatever the majority wants to do.
And I'm fine with both, too. But, and I'm also okay with moving this to not start until April.
Okay.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Why don't, so did we decide, were we gonna meet on Wednesday following? Is that, was that the proposal?
It looks like we'll start in April with the in-person council meeting. The work sessions will continue to be Zoom, is my understanding. Everyone seems to be okay with that. And I guess the question is, Linda, Jenna, and Brad, do you, do you want the work session the week after the city council meeting or before? You want it before, Jerry's after. What about you, Linda?
I'm ambivalent.
Okay, Brad, do you have a preference? You're on mute or something. I can't hear.
Oh, I am on mute. Sorry. I like the week after.
Okay, that would be my preference, too. So I think we're three there. So, Leila, it looks like we will do the city council meeting on the first Wednesday after the first Monday, and the work session will be the following week. And we will start the in-person meeting in April. So the first one will be April 5th.
And I'm not entirely comfortable going in person yet. Is it possible?
Maybe as we get closer, look at it as we get closer.
Sure, that would be fine.
Yeah, I think that's, that's a good way to go. And, and the week following, is it on a Wednesday?
Right.
Oh, yeah, okay. And as far as just noting whenever we do decide to go in person, it's availability. So I don't want Pine Grove to hold the dates until we actually know what we're doing, so.
Is there a way that we can ask or survey the people, the users that come, the citizens that come to these Zoom meetings? I know that we went back to the non-webinar form. And I'm wondering if that's been a better experience for the community. I don't know if we can all say yes or no.
If we were in the webinar forum, I could poll them. But since we're not, I can't.
I will say that the in-person meetings that we've had and tested multiple ways, I have found them distracting. And either, you know, on both sides, we tend to have long meetings and people walking in and out is distracting. Also, the technology of muting, unmuting people in person, speakers on that, I don't think we've quite figured it out yet.
No, we haven't. We have some ideas about how to make it work better next time around. But you know, until we have a space that's outfitted for us to just walk in, it's going to be a little hodgepodge. But, but we agreed, we, I think Josh and I have been talking about a way to try to simplify the experience for everyone.
If we were going, how much notice would you need to have, Leila, for the next public meeting? So let's say, you know, maybe it's May or whenever. When would you need to know that we were going to go public, if we're going to go public?
I think it's 30 days would be nice, you know, like a month ahead of time. It would be helpful for us. And then we can confirm venue, we can get the technology all sorted out. And that gives the public a fair amount of time to know, too, but anything less than that starts to make it challenging.
Okay.
Okay. So we've got that squared away, sounds like.
What we have squared away is that we're going to keep it the same third, the first Wednesday after the first Monday through March, and we're going to have the workshop on the same day through March. And then April, we're going to do the first Monday after, or the first Wednesday after the first Monday, and then the next week, we're going to have the workshop.
Correct. So that would be April 12.
And 12. Yeah. Okay, and then you're sort of tabling in-person meeting discussion till, should I just put it on for next month and you guys can talk about it?
I think if we just have a chance to review it and take a look at the, at the COVID numbers would be a good idea. Been spiking a little bit lately.
Okay, I'll put that on the regular session for March, because.
City manager report. Leila, you're on.
Yeah, great. Okay, well, I want to start with recognizing Chief Hearth. So Eric celebrated his 20th anniversary with the city on February 1st, actually. I thought it was the 6th, but it was the 1st. We, we embarrassed him plenty in, in the office. But I did want to say a few things about Eric, because 20 years is a long time to spend in one organization and particularly in the field of work that Chief Hearth was involved in. So when Chief was appointed to the position of chief, I think he served in an interim role starting in August of 2009 and then was became the chief in February of 2010. So he's been our chief for 13 years now. And they said it might be a spell before the city has to have a replacement, and I'm so glad that that has proven true. One of Eric's priorities when he became chief was really keeping his officers long-term. And I think those of you that have been around a while know that he has done that in spades. So I asked his team to provide us with a few comments about their chief, and so I wanted to share a few of those comments. Officer Mumi, who's been with the department now for six years, so one of the things he appreciates most about Eric is his ability to develop an individual style of policing within the framework of his vision for the department. So all the guys tell me how much the chief really supports them and who they are individually and their training and really supporting them in their work. That he encourages discussions of learning so that they may become more rounded peace officers. And Mumi says he has deep trust in his decision-making process and his code of ethics. John Garcia, who's been with us 10 years this October, in fact, admitted that he planned to leave after about five years, and he's about to hit 10. And he credits that in large part to the leadership of Chief Hearth and the way that he manages his department. Officer Mike Sims, who's been with the city now for 13 years, really references the chief's support in terms of community support and the love that is reflective of how the chief treats his team. So I think one of the things coming to this city that was a welcome and wonderful surprise was that our police department is well-loved, visible aspects of our city, and I think that's a great deal because of their community connection. You know, Eric really has embodied opportunities for his team to get training. You know, I think in a, in a small organization, he recognizes that there's limitations on advancement. But all the guys told me that they've all had opportunities for jobs with other advancement potential, but they stay because of the chief and his leadership and their role in this community. I think one of, one just thing I want to add about the chief, too, is just his steady leadership and his support of his team is something that I, I go to him for counsel. I rely a lot on Eric for a lot of things and just deeply value his leadership and partnership. So I know you all joined me in thanking the chief for 20 years of service. I joke, I hope he's here another 20 years. I don't know if he feels that way, but I do hope that he sticks around with us till the very end, or at least for as long as I'm here. So thank you, Chief Hearth. We appreciate you and celebrate you. And just in the interest of time, the only other announcement I have in addition to what's in the, the report is that the the oral arguments for the Luba hearing on the Dorcas Hotel Project were heard day before yesterday, and we're expecting a decision on that sometime at the end of the month. So I'll keep council and the community informed. And I don't know if I could quickly do this, but if you don't mind, I did want to share. I mentioned this before, but can you see my screen, the planning commission? I just want to point this out for folks that we've updated the webpage, so I know it doesn't seem super exciting, but it is to me. We've put in some information here about how you can comment on a proposal. So if somebody remembers, we had an issue with some comments. So we're trying to really track things. Everything needs to come through the planning email in order to be added to the record. So just want to highlight that. You can find all that information here. And then on the side here, the sidebar, you can see that what's been happening previously, and this is a matter of, of technology, that applications for planning commission hearings were not, we posted that a week in advance. So when the public actually finally got to see that information, unless they requested it from us, was at the point that the staff report was drafted. In other cities I've worked in, once an application is deemed complete, we would actually post it on the website. So that was available to folks immediately. And so we've done that. We don't have any current applications at the moment, but as soon as we have one deemed complete, it will show up here. And then we will try to keep up to date. Sort of the past, kind of last few applications will be sort of on this link here. So if folks are curious, they can go and see that. So I just wanted to share that with folks so you know where to look if you're wanting to comment on an application, if you're curious about something that's coming up. And it's just one of the other new ways that the city is really trying to help get information out there into the community so that folks have it frankly as soon as we do. And I think that that will just contribute to better public engagement around these applications. So thanks for your time. And that's all I got.
Thank you. Okay. Any final words from anyone? All right, we will adjourn the meeting at 8:17. Thank you all.
Thank you.